Thanks for not spreading it around, Andrew.
Oh, my daughter's family had it. It was vicious. Vicious.
Haven't had that yet. Fortune.
Hello, Ann.
Did you roll your eyes like I did? My sentence, you know, like tweets at me that stuff.
Andrew, were you pleased with the outcome of the game last night?
Yeah.
What am I looking on for you, Brandon?
Uh, well, I wanted Arizona to win.
Arizona?
Who did win?
No one.
Apparently it wasn't Arizona. UNC was in plan, honey.
Kansas won.
Kansas did win.
Sixty-nine, seventy-two.
We rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flag back in another place. All right.
I, we had a fair meeting, but that's what they're talking about.
So, welcome, everyone. Um, anyone here, public comment period? Does anyone want to speak to us? Now's the time. No? Okay. April, uh, looking for a motion to approve the board meeting agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Johnson. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Any discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair, we do have one item to add to the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, and I sent that out to the board, uh, yesterday evening. It's approval to hire, uh, one part-time victim advocate assistant, uh, Brianna Meyer at Level A thirteen, Step two, eighteen ninety-three per hour.
Yeah.
Now go under consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I will amend my motion to include the amended agenda.
Okay. And I, I'm gonna read a letter that I got from the Department of Human Services to when we get to Paul, so I don't know if that has to be added or not.
Uh, second amended agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Andrew, do you wanna walk us?
Sure, I'd be happy to go through it. So on the consent agenda today, we have, uh, approval of the March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two board meeting minutes, approval of the social services accounts payable, approval of the county and hospital accounts payable, approval to hire a full-time senior accounting specialist, Courtney Littsow, at B thirty-one, Step four, twenty-six dollars an hour, effective April nineteenth, approval of the employment status change for part-time corrections officer, Michael Howell, to full-time, effective April sixth, move the twenty-twenty-one federal boating equipment grant, appointment of Norfolk watershed board member. This is a reappointment, uh, approval of Resolution twenty-twenty-two fifteen premises permit application for Shaggy Bonfire, and then the item we just added, the approval of the hire for the crime, uh, the victim advocate assistant.
Hey, does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? I just have one. This, uh, the public health, she's gonna be training, I'm assuming, with, um,
With Julie, yes.
With Julie before she retires?
Yeah, and that's the reason we're bringing her on a little bit before Julie's retirement date, about a month or so.
And would, if we would've had her before, would that have changed what we could've done with the CHS or?
Possibly.
Okay. Have we talked about that anymore or not?
Um, we haven't discussed it, uh, I haven't discussed it in great detail with, with Anne. She's on vacation this week, but we have to talk about it with her when she comes back. So, yeah, she's somewhere warm.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda?
I just have one that Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash fifteen, or do we gotta take that separate, or are we gonna?
Nope, we can do it on of us.
We'll just do a resolution.
Just roll call.
All right.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I, uh, motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? If not, Cory, do you want to call the roll?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Obergeiss?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Who, who, where are we? Paul Bukovich, Social Service Director.
Sounds impressive, doesn't it?
Prolly, prolly pressed.
We all know better, right?
I take it things ain't going so well over there?
Pretty well.
Fortunately, when, when things are busy for us, that means that things are not good, so.
Gotcha.
Good morning, Paul Bukovich, Meeker County Social Services Director. I'm here before you with an order of business, um, requesting to modify our county burial funeral allowance expenditure policy. Uh, we received notification from, uh, one of our business partners in the community, um, describing a situation where when a person accesses our funeral burial account, and is looking for final internment, um, and they select, or it is selected that they're going to be cremated, there is a medical examiner, um, that needs to sign off on that, uh, process for them to be able to move forward with the, the cremation. And that does have a fifty-dollar charge to it. And so we felt that it was reasonable, I felt that it was reasonable to be able to offer the cost of that care. As we look at our funeral policy, and this is always something that, that, uh, Lilann Shepherd, um, and I continue to do, um, regionally, we are at a very good price point for what we're expending on county-based funerals. Um, and we're very pleased that our, uh, folks that work with us in our community are accepting of the, the rate that we're able to pay. Um, and so this was, uh, you know, they shouldn't have the added burden. Um, our rates are, are, are generally some of the lowest in the region for this service. And we do get a very good service. They're very responsive. In the, the RBA, I did give you kind of some numbers as far as what, um, we've been seeing over the course of the last few years. And we're averaging about fifteen county-based burials, uh, a year. Um, and of course, there's ebbs and flows with that, obviously. But I think it's a, it's a fairly stable budget area, and I don't believe that adding this expense is gonna have a significant impact.
Do we work with all of the funeral homes in Meeker County?
We do, but we predominantly work with, uh, Johnson and Hangland as, as one of the larger providers.
And also, we try hard to collect anything we can from estate afterwards and everything also.
Yes, our estate recoveries are, are very good. Um, but the way the statute is read is, is if somebody comes to us, um, we have the responsibility to provide that payment. And then we seek to collect from whatever sources we can. I, I hate to put it this way, but it is a sanitation issue that, that we're responsible for here. And I don't mean to dehumanize the, the situation at all. It's just our responsibility and why we're really on the, on the, the payment side of this.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the amended, uh, burial and funeral allowance?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the amended county burial and funeral allowance expenditure policy to include reimbursement for medical examiner fees.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredeis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So Paul, before you leave, I want to read this letter I got yesterday from the, um, Minnesota Department of Human Services. Dear Commissioner Obergeiss.
Does he want to leave first, or?
It is my pleasure to commend you and your staff for perfect performance in meeting the Department of Human Services financial reporting requirements for calendar year two thousand twenty-one. All key quarterly fiscal reports for programs your county participate in and were submitted to our Financial Operation Division honor before the report deadlines are in perfect order. The effort required submission of thirty-two major reports covering the four calendar quarters of two thousand twenty-one. The reports were local collaborative time study, MIMFIP Consolidated Fund Client Statistics Income Maintenance Social Service Fund, uh, Base Grant Fiscal Report Title four E. If your county participates in a local collaborative submission of their support, may require the collection of multiple local partners. I know this accomplishment requires planning and efficient operation and teamwork within your county human services department. The result is timely revenue for your county and compliance with federal report, reporting for us at the state. Please congratulate your management and staff on this superb effort. So congratulations. We really appreciate it.
Each of those reports has a significant amount of moving parts to it, so our, our accounting team really kind of knocks out a part, but all of our employees also are doing their part as well. I don't usually get before you, now that we have the consent agenda, but I do have one thing for you. Today is Gold Star Spouses Day, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And pass, can, we appreciate it. Congratulations.
Did you tell him the DHS was talking about the twenty-eighteen calendar year?
No, I didn't mention that.
They're always four years behind.
Okay, with that, we're gonna recess the county board and convene the county ditch authority.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Barb Lock, County Director, with me is District Inspector John Condon. Before you is the, um, request to have you adopt the joint drainage policy, which is, um, between the counties of Meeker, McCloud, Renville, Sibley, and Wright. Before I do that, it was asked for a redline copy, which was very difficult because the structure of the policy was, uh, reworked quite a bit, and it was, uh, realigned in different areas. So I'm gonna hit the seven high points of what was changed or what was lined up. In the first part, there was more work done with nauseous weeds, adding the state definition. In, uh, part exhibit A, there was the right to amend the districts, and this was concerning for some who are redistricting and their representation wouldn't necessarily line up with the, um, representation of the individual ditches, so we have that ability to realign them as necessary. Uh, drainage system inspections, they, uh, went to allowing for sixty thousand per county on a year for repairs. That's up from forty thousand. And also, there were reminders or alignments that our ditch inspectors will speak with each other and make sure that there's a little bit more or continued collaboration between them. There was, uh, information put on for vegetative control with regard to allowing for permission for individuals to come to the ditch inspectors to remove trees in the, um, right away at the, at their expense, at their own expense, but also that they had to be, um, working with, uh, the inspector in each particular county. Additional language was added to express that the trees brush and other obstructions were not to be put in the drainage right away, so it was made more clear. There was a modification to the drop inlet specifications. There were erosion control measures that were aligned. They also allowed for seeding of alfalfa, and if alfalfa was to be tilled up, to be sure that there was a winter cover and to work with SWCD before reseeding, to be sure that that was in line with, uh, recommendations. There was also information on private approaches and crossings that was identified in that if a crossing was taken out or repaired, and who was going to be responsible for the repair, the removal, and going forward. So it was clearly put in there to, um, highlight that as well. If there are any other questions, then should John and I could answer those? Otherwise, we ask that you, um, go ahead and approve the recommendation by Reiki Moon and the five counties that have worked to update this policy.
Madam Chair, move to approve the drainage policy for joint county drainage systems in Meeker, McCloud, Renville, Sibley, and Wright Counties' operation, maintenance, and repairs.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Questions? Concerns?
Pretty straightforward meeting.
Yeah, okay. All's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll adjourn the county ditch authority and reconvene as a county board, but I suppose we can't move on yet until nine o'clock.
So my thought was that, uh, if Phil was there, we could tackle a couple of his items while we waited for the nine o'clock time to come.
The only problem with that plan is he's not here. Because I looked at that already. So.
Could we give our committee reports?
We could do our committee reports.
We do that?
Stay ahead of the game. So.
Okay.
Where shall we start?
Your fault.
Person who brought it up.
Okay, let's start with me. No, I don't like to do that because Danny has some of the same meetings and then he can hit them before me. You, why don't you start?
I like to play off you without like, ah, it's not what I heard.
Come on, Danny.
I don't care. I can go.
Okay.
Uh, I had a, uh, watershed Zoom meeting, uh, discussing one plan, uh, one watershed, one plan about the Mississippi with, uh, Clearwater Water, Soil and Water, and along with Brandy, talking about issues because they're starting to develop the policy and stuff for the watershed, uh, the one wa, one plan, water, watershed for Mississippi. Had a culvert meeting, which we're gonna discuss later, and, uh, CSAH fourteen. Think, uh, Beth and Paul were there for that. Had a, went to the, uh, did the Zoom for the Prime Health about insurance, uh, with Matt, giving an overview of all the, the things I think they're trying to sell to what other members? That was the meeting was about, was basically their presentation to other possible people. So you had the, uh, joint county ditch, uh, meeting with, uh, Paul, Barb, John, and Phil were there. Uh, nothing really kind of discussed that in detail. Uh, had another wa, watershed, one plan, one meeting with the actual Mississippi people, and basically they're battling between joint powers and MOA, which is the memorandum of agreement. Some counties want the MOA, which is a typical one watershed, one plan policy, and some want joint powers. Um, Brandy's been sucked into that with other, uh, county attorneys, and it's a kind of a cluster. Not just because Brandy was sucked, tend to put that, but the fact that the county, uh, all the county attorneys.
That became a cluster is what it sounds like.
Yeah, well, it could be. I don't know. I wasn't at the county attorney meeting portion of that. But basically, the, uh, what's the, the main, the county Benton? What, what do they call it? The?
Benton wants to be, Benton's willing to be the fiscal host. However, in order to be the fiscal host, they want it to be a joint powers entity because of the concerns of liability. However, other counties like Stearns County are saying no. The way that the one watershed, one plan is set up is that Bowser specifically through statute has it where the plans that are gonna be, um, the projects that are gonna be completed don't have liability on the fiscal host, so there's no need for it to be a fiscal host. So Benton says, well, if, um, other counties want it to be a MOA with no joint powers entity, then they can pick up the fiscal host responsibility. We have such a short, uh, such a small percentage of, um, uh, land that is involved in this. I think it's seven percent. And so it wouldn't make sense for us to do that. Stearns is already the fiscal host for other one watershed, one plans that they're involved in, so they don't want to take on another one. So we're kind of sitting here trying to figure out, do we have Benton be the fiscal host and do a joint, joint powers entity, even though it's not in necessarily our best interest? Because then you lose a little more autonomy and, um, m, m, less control at the local level. And so those are the conversations they're having.
So.
This'll be coming up in a bigger conversation. We need a delegate. There's been some complicated matters. Um, there's one individual who represents SWCD as well as the Clearwater Watershed District. The statute allows for that individual to represent both entities, but the, uh, recommendations from the other county attorneys is that you have to have one representative, one separate representative with one vote for each entity. So now we have to delegate that out, even though the current representative is allowed to be able to give two votes.
So question, and I didn't maybe quite understand. You have to form a joint powers before you have a fiscal host, and if you're not a joint powers, you don't need a fiscal host. Is that what you said?
No. Benton is saying that they're willing to be the fiscal host, but if they're gonna be the fiscal host, then they want it to be a joint powers entity rather than just under the standard MOA like we have with all of, all other one watershed, one plans, like the Norfolk. Each county attorney is reviewing it through the counties. There hasn't been any contention. We've been getting along well. But the local control is remaining at that local level, rather than having a joint powers entity board where the decisions are being made at the higher level.
I was just curious, because we just, down in McCloud, they became the fiscal host, and we don't have a joint powers on that one.
Do not need a joint powers entity to do fiscal host. It's their request. In order to do that, they said, I want JPE, otherwise someone else can take it on under the current MOA.
Okay. That, I just wanted to be clear that we didn't do something wrong down there. We should've checked.
Norfolk has a MOA, and they've been doing it for, I don't know how many years, and I think Wright is their fiscal host possibly.
Okay.
And that's why they don't want to take it on, because they're already doing one as well, because Wright County, Benton, Stern, Sherburne, Meeker, and Malax. And then I think Morrison, um, only has like point oh-seven percent, and so they're not even, uh, vested in the one watershed, one plan.
We seem to have gotten ourselves pulled in for very small pieces of these watersheds.
But if you don't.
Very small.
If you're not part of that, it's just, then you have no.
No say whatsoever.
No say, and then we're worried about whether, what happens to Clearwater Watershed Funds and Soil and Water Funds.
Yep.
You know, in terms of what Bowser says, and Bowser gets in the middle there, and then that creates more of a cluster, and, and it also costs, I think, three thousand dollars extra to be joint powers versus a MOA for each county. And the liability risk is not as miniscule for Benton, but I don't know how that got to that point. So that, that was a whole meeting was, were, are we gonna have a MOA or a JP or joint powers? And no one had a copy of the MOA, so it's like going, I was glad I zoomed that meeting, because I was like, oh, what are we even talking about? We, we don't have either.
So the MOA is the memorandum of understanding?
Of agreement, yes.
Agreement. Okay.
Which is standard procedure, which has been kind of vetted by attorneys before, but once you do joint powers, then all the attorneys are involved again. And then they like to, you know, flex their muscles and say, hey, you know, I learned this in law school and that. I have no idea.
But another caveat to that is.
I'm assuming that's what happens. I don't know.
So one last question. So the memorandum of agreements that have been used, they're all standard? Standard language? There's no variation?
Oh, there's variation.
There's variation.
Because there's, um, yeah, yeah.
There's some variation.
But the meat of it is pretty standard.
Okay.
Yeah. And then there's another caveat to this one watershed, one plan, is that the Clearwater Watershed District is crafting a letter explaining how what Bowser's requiring these entities is maybe not consistent with the statutory authority. So you may be seeing a letter coming to this board, um, and supporting that letter so we could sign off on it to say, state, we need to be looking at this to make sure it's consistent with what the statute's saying, because the way that Bowser's making memorandums of, um, or their guidance, they're sending out bulletins on guiding counties through this one watershed, one plan, and some of their guidance is inconsistent with maybe what the statutory authority is, uh, interpreted by, um, folks who are very familiar with the, the statutes.
So have you guys even gotten as far as to look at an engineering firm or anything, or?
Oh, no, no. This is a policy. This is.
You're still working on that?
And then I think the, the lawyers have to meet again, is what they came up with?
Next, uh, in two weeks. I'm in trial next week, so they accommodated my schedule.
We've already picked our engineering firm. We got the bids and we've selected Houston.
That's what happens when the financial host decides.
What's going on? Only, I might as well muddy the waters some more around ditches. That, and it's part of my update. On the fifteenth, I went down to Farm Bureau's Legislative Conference after the board meeting, and Tom Peterson was down there, and I brought up a question, and a question and answer. I brought up the fact that, because actually Kale asked me to bring it up, is the poor relationship between the state, DNR, you know, fish and wildlife, uh, federal and, and the county, then, and just what do we need to do to have a better communication and collaboration? This ain't a, you know, instead of coming down with the iron fist on every policy. And, you know, even though you're a ditch authority, you just do it. And he brought up, Renville must be having a little lawsuit with the DNR, because he goes, let me guess what county you're from, Renville? And I said, no, close. I said, but, so Renville is definitely involved with a lawsuit, either Bowser or DNR or somebody over some ditch.
They have a billion ditches and they're built in swamp, essentially, you know?
Yeah.
When you get down to it.
Big ditches.
Yeah.
Big ditches, so.
Just so everybody knows, Bowser is like state water. It's not a guy named Bowser. Which I had to learn somewhere along the line. I was like, who's Bowser? Why does he keep making all these bad decisions?
He's not Mario's buddy.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, does it stand for, it's an acronym?
Yeah, it's an acronym.
Word of water and resources.
Exactly. So it's.
And it's like, further muddy, Sock River watershed enters into my district briefly up on the north end, small. And, uh, my representative there has told me that, Joe, and he won't take the position again, so I gotta find a new guy there. And the trouble is, I don't have, you want representation on the board, because otherwise it's Stearns and all the way up into Wasacus and head northwest. So if you don't have representation, then these other counties have that over you, but I also don't have no pool of people to pick from. It's not the most exciting job in the world. And you'd.
So, so if you're up in that corner, I'm taking Lake Cronus probably, right?
No, it's actually, it's Eden Valley, in a small, uh, mile and a half.
So is that a different DNR? Area? Or are you still in this one?
I don't know. It's section. It's probably is a different region or district or.
It might be a different region.
Okay.
Because it goes all the way out. You're talking, I'm saying, because big old, the lakes here.
Oh.
It goes way northwest.
Glenwood and Alex and area?
Comes about a mile and a half into Meeker and the north edge, right around Eden Valley there.
Okay.
And the curl water goes both ways.
Okay.
You got the curl going south and Sock going north.
So that's where that is at.
So as long as we're talking about ditch.
Yeah, exactly. I know. But, uh, so that's kind of a cluster. And then we had a class comp Zoom meeting with the, uh, was it Gallagher, the name?
No, DDA.
Oh, DDA. Gotcha. For the work stu, uh, the wage study. So they're just compiling who they should compare with, and I think Andrew's giving it to the department heads to add who they think should also be in that pool, like counties or whatever. Similar, similar things to compare the wage to, and then they will bring that to us, the full board.
And we have some discussion about the comparisons, or is that already decided? Then that was the caveat.
Well, it's, yeah.
So that'll probably come in a form of a work session, or will that actually be a board meeting?
Uh, I don't know. I think it's actually, isn't it a board meeting? God of Andrew up there?
Andrew?
Yes, it will be. So the, yes, the May, the first meeting in May, May third, I think, is the date, whatever that first Tuesday is. So, um, yes, the intent is that we're gonna bring it for approval by the county board. Um, we're gonna get, as Danny said, we're gonna get feedback from department heads first, and then we're also, uh, the consultant is gonna provide us with some metrics and some recommendations as well. So the consultant will come in and present that, um, on, on that first meeting in May.
Because basically, all we did was lay the framework for, if they basically questioned us, is how we want to, what pool we want to draw from to get the information. How they're gonna gather the information and from there.
So far, it's the same pool as before, I think.
And a couple new ones.
Was there a couple new ones in there?
Same, same, same.
Same. Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Pull both of them. Yeah, it just is.
Okay.
Because it's a, what was there? Twenty-five, bro, I mean.
How far east?
There was thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
They explained that they were gonna spotlight some of these instead of use them as actual data points, but the spotlight would also just help illuminate what the other areas are, even though we maybe can't, um, be the same as them. So it's a, it's a broader concept than maybe what we've had before.
I would think that way is more, how far that way did they go?
She was on there, I know that. Okay.
Is right?
Yeah, so all of our.
The same as last time.
What, Andrew?
All of our adjacent neighbors were on the list.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, there was a number of other counties that I imagine, um, had similar populations, and that's the reason they were chosen last time. Yeah. Yeah, out to Chippewa County, and then, um, so there's, there's a pretty good list that was put together in twenty eighteen, and then we're gonna take a look at that and refine it a little bit, maybe, you know, s, cut some off, put some new ones on, and so.
Get rid of the outliers, maybe.
Okay.
The idea was to throw a wider net, and then that would identify which ones are outliers that aren't relevant to us.
Makes sense. All right, are you done?
Steve, Brandy, and I were on that one.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm done.
So I guess now we better open the public hearing for the redistricting. So, Barb, Lock.
That's perfect filling by myself. Geez, that's impressive.
Longest update you ever.
I know, exactly. I had it. See my list? Let me look at.
I see.
Where's that little tiny sticky?
It's a Florida, Danny.
Right, so we're gonna open the public hearing for the commissioner redistricting, Barb.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, you should have a motion to open the public hearing.
That's what I meant to say, could I get a motion? To open the public hearing, a motion by Commissioner Shifeline? Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any discussion? All in favor? Right, let us open the hearing.
So I plan to present a file of the redistricting process for the public hearing. And then if there's any public comments, we'll take them as well. So first off, what is redistricting? It's the process of redrawing the boundaries of election districts throughout the nation, states, cities and counties. And the purpose is to have people of each district are equally represented at every one of those levels as much as possible. And this is typically done um with the census and every ten years and in the year ending in two as we are right now. The county responsibilities. Are um take a form of two items, uh reestablishing the existing commissioner, county commissioner districts. If they currently beat all the statutory requirements or drawing new county commissioner districts, that better or likely. Conform to the statutes in another way. So the requirements as we um look at the county commissioner district requirements specifically. Districts are bounded by precincts and wards, the districts are to be contiguous in territory. The district population cannot vary more than ten percent from the average of all the districts. The majority of the least populous districts cannot contain less than the majority of the population of the county. The districts are to be as equal in population as possible, considering they must be compact and as regular in form as practical. While still be bounded by the townships, the municipal ward and precinct boundaries. And then each of the districts in Meeker County are divided by the number of board members, which is five. So is redistricting required, and there's two full yes, when the criteria need to specify the need. Which would have any of those would have been out of line that I just went over, or sometimes. When the county decides there was a reason to redistrict if the new district would better meet the criteria in the statute. So the options that we have put before you are in option one or option A. Option A is currently the plan that we have in place, that particular option allows for um. All the tests to be met, and I believe you have a copy of that as well, the tests in that we are to meet the. Ideal district and not be outside of the ten percent. Our largest variation would be a plus two fifty five and a largest uh dek less would be one sixty five. So we meet the variation, we meet the majority uh test as well. This is the current plan that is in place for our commissioner set. Offering a alternative or an option to uh be viewed would be our option B. In this case, we have decreased the variation a little in that um there's an eighty-three variation in district. District one, for example, however, the still variation on the minus or the less than average at one sixty-five remains. This does move people around and then slide later from here. Will show the representation change that could likely happen if um Plan B were to be opted. And also this one meets the criteria of the least majority, and I show that on the bottom of that particular slide. Moving on to option C, option C has the same. Given criteria, however, it's a middle ground with one oh three being the high variation. The minus one sixty-five remains on all of the plans, again, this one. Uh meets all the criteria that could be uh needed to um be adopted if that were to be the course of the board. Moving on to the next slide, I am showing you in one of the criteria that we will be looking, if you will, to head out the facts. Um that we need to analyze, the largest growth between twenty ten and twenty twenty, it's a net growth of one hundred. The largest one in the top five, Collinwood, Dasselton, Greenlee, Ward Two and Union Grove. And incidentally, that crosses over uh four of, or all five of them. No, four of the commissioner districts, two is not involved there, and if you look at the most decrease. And you look at the bottom five, they're um the commissioner districts, again, four of the five are involved. So what I'm trying to point out there is that our change was across the districts, it wasn't one specific district taking a large loss. Or a greater gain in that process. So that analysis was taken into consideration as we put these plans together and should be also a a good point for you to reference. Moving on, the differences between the plans that I just outlined, again, the ideal district is twenty-three, four hundred divided by five. That's our population from twenty twenty, our ideal district is forty-six eighty. We look at our current plan or option A as we referenced, the largest over is two fifty-five. This in the under, again, ideal is one sixty-five, you'll see the one sixty-five remains of all three plans. As uh in another slide, I will indicate that I could not find another option to bring to that would meet the criteria. So what I'm outlining here is the largest difference of two fifty-five over ninety over and one oh three over. That is the main difference on all three options that I'm presenting to you. Moving on to commissioner districts three, four and five, I found only one combination to meet the criteria, and that is our current configuration. Which is um what we're presenting for those three districts. They would remain unchanged in any one of the three plans going forward, and I do not believe a plan was forwarded to us that would be. Uh contrary to my findings. Moving on, as we look at the different combinations and some of the things that you might wanna look at. Uh Plan A puts twenty-one point oh nine percent of the people in district one. Plan B would put that at twenty point thirty-five and Plan C would put that at twenty point forty-four. Again, right in line with the uh averages, a little bit above, a little bit below. If you look at uh Commissioner District Two, the same holds true with Commissioner District Two being slightly under. At nineteen point four seven today, under the current plan, bringing it to twenty point two or twenty point one two. Which are very insignificant differences as we look at that difference. So with a population consideration on those criteria that it went through at the beginning. So again, as we look, um there is no change um between Plan B and C to the current plan. For Harvey or for city townships, there would however be a change either of those plans. To all of the Mitchfield wards, Mitchfield Township, City of Darwin, and the Township of Darwin. Uh could likely affect about eighty-four hundred and seventy-eight of our population, which is a a shift one way or another. Again, one of the other things in the plans, we'll go through these individually in Plan A. The ten percent rule puts um that totally in compliance. The five percent rule, five percent means that a five percent of the average district size of the county and that is. What is shifted in and what is shifted out would require that particular district to run. Making no change to Plan A and within mind that the population increased by one hundred. That would put Commissioner District One and Five on the ballot, the other three commissioner districts would not. The adoption of the resolution as as proposed for this one, in that there would be no shift or no change. In the other three districts, in District One and Five are at end of term currently anyway. So going on to option Plan B. Sorry, that's okay, the ten percent rule here, as I indicated, was a plus ninety and a minus one sixty-five. This five percent rule in this case would affect District Two in that the threshold of effective voters. Would be two thirty-four and the representation change would be seventy-two fifty-eight. All that is obtained is what's represented today, what's represented under the new plan, adding them together. And so Commissioner District Two would have to run with the adoption of Plan Two appearing, and that would run for um. Depending upon how you set your term, but likely a two-year and a two-year, so the term currently would be shortened to two years being there was a change. Commissioner District One and Five again will be running regardless of the plan that you choose. Going to option C, beyond the plans that I presented, we have a variation of one oh three, minus one sixty-five. They all comply in the ten percent rule, again, on the five percent rule would affect District Two in that there would be that larger presentation change. Making that on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-two. So at that, uh are there any uh questions for me as to uh the plans or any part of what we presented?
Yes, so B or C would end up with Commissioner District Two running?
That is correct, it would require.
And it would have to be a two-year term?
That will be set up uh at the end, the terms can be set, so at the end of the resolution, you will see that we have presented. The um resolution where with staggered terms, Commissioner District One and Five will be running. But they would not necessarily need to be a four-year, they could be a two-year and or you could add another one in there. So either way, you could add it as a two or a four, so it's up to you to stagger those terms. By you as a board, to stagger those terms depending upon the plan you choose.
My question is, where, I know four was the lowest population. Uh where is three falling or?
As in the current plan?
Yeah, can we bring up that slide with currently where we sit on all, Andrew? Cory's doing, sorry.
Wanna go all the way back to the map?
Yeah, go back to the, where we are right now, kinda.
So on the one that. Twenty-nine thirty-five and then forty-five fifty-five is the current.
What I'm getting at, if you look at our growth, tho- those two districts that are the lowest are actually growing. Collinwood and Dassel and a lot, so I mean. I think it's kinda pointless to move right now for such a small indication, because some of this might solve itself in the next. You know, populated, the way it's showing right now on the growth, the growth is in the lowest two areas, which will just narrow that.
The way Wright County is moving towards Meeker and and especially in Collinwood Township, just being right.
That's what I'm saying, but one of these next slides showed that co- the top five, Collinwood and Dassel Township were in that. So I mean, and them are the lowest two districts, so you're actually gonna narrow the margin on its own.
In in ten years from now, you can bet that that'll be a bigger shift yet.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm getting at, I mean, it might stagnate at some point. Right direction, so for us to change it, then in ten years, you might have to change it again because you shifted wrongly. That's just. Being we're not way out of compliance anyway.
Go to that um screen right there, so the plus area is in Collinwood, Dassel Township, Greenlee, which will Ward Two and Union Grove. And then the minuses ended up down on the bottoms in Mitchfield wards. Ironically, Mitchfield dropped by a hundred and six, I believe.
Julie, so that that's what I mean, everybody.
I'm Ward Two, sorry.
You're Ward Two.
I thought you meant district.
But four to five or or.
In the city of Mitchfield, it's anticipated that Ward Two will grow, cause it's, there's already housing going up at the east side of Ward Two. And then there's also housing in Ward Five, which is in our northwest corner of the city of Mitchfield. And so when you see five as a drop there, that seems like, you know, not characteristic to what we might think should have happened there. And then Ward Two definitely is in the right position, because that's where the apartments grew.
So really, I mean, there's, projection is, we're balanced pretty good for projection even. That's kinda what I was getting at, I mean, the growth is gonna happen in right areas.
And this was probably the the smallest growth as I analyzed the last twenty years with a growth of one hundred. The previous growths were in the area of three hundred and four hundred, so whether that is. Census taking or whether that is um, you know, the data, there's really no way to know that. But our growth in Meeker County was just one hundred and the growth in the city of Mitchfield took one of the largest drops as a whole.
And for this process, the city also agreed that there wasn't any changes necessary.
The city remained where they were, they fell within all of the criteria that they need for all five wards and made no changes.
You know, and going back to what Steve said, it, ten years from now, it's gonna change, if we ever got enough housing for all the jobs we have in Meeker County. And got the people moved in here, it's gonna shift a lot, we're gonna grow a lot ten years from now, potentially.
By age, anything could happen. Every day's a gift.
Don't buy green bananas anymore?
You're absolute, I hope we get off on this.
Some of the options that we can have is to close the public hearing part, if there's no one in the audience that wants to.
Any questions anymore, does anyone from the public want to speak? No, then I will look for a motion to close the public hearing, correct Barb?
I'll make a motion, my own chair calls the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner. You didn't wanna redistrict?
I didn't wanna do this at all.
Why did you nudge me and say pick option B or C?
I was hoping you'd go for it, any more discussion?
You love campaigning.
She looks relieved, all in, it's kinda fun, Julie.
I think we got a resolution.
All in favor, oh, we have to.
We have to.
Roll call, sorry.
We gotta vote on the meeting.
I gotta close the hearing first.
Oh, gotcha, sorry.
Okay, can I? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All right, now, now we're looking for a resolution.
On the uh on the side here is when we go through the what next first before we move forward, so back up.
Is that Sir Andrew's gonna go through that?
Yes, that is going to be me, and so uh the next things that we have to do. We'll review the findings or criteria for the county redistricting, determine which option is best for the county. And then establish or reestablish the county of um Meeker Commissioner Districts, and then establish the district term and length. So wanted to go through uh each individual of the findings of fact. Uh the first is that the districts are bounded by towns, municipal ward or precinct lines. The districts are composed of contiguous territory. The majority of the least populous districts contain not less than the majority of the population of the county. No district varies in population more than ten percent from the average of all districts of the county. The districts are as regular and compact in form as practical, depending on the geography of the county. The districts are nearly in population as possible while satisfying the other criteria of Minnesota Statute three seventy-five dot oh twenty-five. And the application of rational, uh yeah, rational state policies. The plan places incumbents in districts that allow voter contin- continuity and minimizes the contest between incumbents allowing for more voter choice. The communities of interest are represented through the geography of the area's significant natural divisions such as been outnumbered to. Lakes, cemeteries, more rural urban population and railroad tracks. And future growth was discussed specifically considering the county's history and growth potentials for the district area. So as was mentioned, all three of our plans cover each of those um findings of fact, some of them do it. A little bit better than others in certain areas, but they, there's not a a waiting for any of them, and so. Uh each of the three, we believe, would satisfy those criteria. So if the desire of the board is to maintain status quo, we have included a a resolution in the packet that could be adopted today. If there is a desire to choose either option B or C or change any of the terms um of any of the uh the. Commissioners, then we would have to amend that resolution and come back at the next meeting, so with that, we'll look for any question.
Questions?
The only one we could change a term on, if we vote for option A. Would be you or Steve.
But.
No, that's not true, you could change the terms, you could change the terms for any of the seats. Uh you could, you know, you could ask that, you know, districts two, three or four um run again. Uh in in the fall and um you know, change that either to a two-year or four-year term the next time around. The only requirement, the only requirement is that, is that we maintain um staggered seating. And so you can't have all five districts up at the same time, um. Un- unless we were in a a situation, you know, where we were required to because of the redistricting.
Which is exactly how I got here.
Exactly, and we used, for those of you who who are aware, you probably know that we used to be on a four and one staggered. Um we don't think that's necessarily the best practice, three and two is probably the better way to go about it. And so uh that's what we would recommend if if we were to look to adjust any of the the terms of the existing commissioners.
So to add to what Andrew just said, on the resolution at the very end of it, you will see that I'm, we are recommending the term. Commissioner District One and Five, we placed on the twenty twenty-two ballot for a four-year term. One and five will be placed on the twenty twenty-two ballot for a four-year term, and this of course could be changed. Commissioner Districts two, three and four would be continuation of their current term and be placed on the ballot in twenty twenty-four. So that's how you're outlining that staggered term as Andrew just talked about, and it's at the tail end of the adoption of the resolution if you so choose to do the one we presented.
Alright, any more questions? If not, I would look for a motion for the resolution.
Madam Chair, move to adopt Meeker County Resolution for Commissioner Districts and establish Commissioner Terms.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, any more discussion? Cory?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodessen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes. Very good, Barb.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Alright, where are we at here?
That was my chance, I blew it.
That was your chance.
I could've been up for again.
You would've missed it.
Phil Schloss, Park Works Director, um I did listen to the end of your last board meeting, I heard some discussion about. Uh motor vehicle parts sales tax, so I just happen to have new booklets for everybody if you wanna learn about what's in our highway user. State of Minnesota.
Actually hot on the topic of the legislature right now.
Did you listen, did you listen yesterday? To the update from AMC, anybody?
Sorry.
I listened yesterday.
What, Andrew?
I listened yesterday.
Andrew listened.
Did did they reference this bill, Senator Newman's bill?
They did, yeah, there's disagreement between the House and the Senate bills about the breakdown of the funding, the House bill includes. Money that would go to transit as well, uh it would still be an increase into H U T V F but not to the same level that um Senator Newman has proposed. Uh there's also some folks in the House who are concerned about taking any money out of the general fund and putting it towards transportation, so. But it, there, it looks like there's some movement on it, um so we'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
I also heard that there's quite a bit of excitement out there for next week's road tour, so I'm looking forward to it.
Who told you that, I wonder who told you that? Then you heard what I said, I might be gone.
The the focus is our shops, so I mean, I won't take you on the worst roads.
Well, that's good of you, that's what the other engineer is.
And we should be back in time for dinner.
Okay, where are you buying us lunch at?
Haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, well, let us know then.
There's nowhere in Kingston, just so you know. Are you sure? I think, I don't know.
Okay.
So I've got three items for you this morning, the first one is to consider the award of our twenty twenty-two reclaim contract. Um you can see a map here, we've got three different roads as part of this contract, they're highlighted in yellow. Uh very interesting, they're all the same length and similar characteristics, so it it they're very similar in price for each one. Brief description of each one, so we've got a piece of casat twenty-one over by Wright County, north side of Exwan Lake. We've got a chunk of casat twenty-three and twenty-eight over by Candy Ojai County, each of them is three point two miles long. Reclaim process, if you're not familiar, so it's an end-of-life pavement treatment. We sometimes will mill off a portion of what's there, depends on our pavement and aggregate section existing. The reason we try and mill and remove a portion when we can is so we don't raise the road any more than we have to, because when you build up, the road narrows. Um so mill up if we can, grind up what's there, pavement and gravel, lay it back, pack it in, prep it for paving. Uh pave it with new asphalt and tie in all our driveways and shoulders. Open bids on March twenty-fourth, we received two bids. Here is the breakdown, um roughly three hundred and ten thousand dollars per mile is our low bid, that's in line with our expectations. I usually use three hundred thousand a mile for estimating purposes. Um I did move our engineer's estimate up a little bit to account for the climate we're in right now. Um but I do think that Night River gave us a pretty good price, I'm satisfied with it.
They do a lot of work, not only in our county, but all the way around us, don't they?
Yep, this region is pretty heavily dominated by Night River and Dunnix. We haven't had Dunnix for a couple of years now, but they will get work here. Um we get other bids occasionally, but these two get the bulk of the work when it comes to the low bid. So my recommended motion would be to award our twenty twenty-two reclaim contract to Night River of Sauk Rapids.
Are there, are these bids pretty solid, I mean, in the environment we're in too, you know, and I know we.
Pressureized?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm satisfied, um I wouldn't have been surprised if they would have been significantly higher.
Well, what I'm getting at though is, we've had like some equipment come back and say we won't honor the bid. You think things are stable enough in this environment that they're gonna honor, you know what I mean?
The only way out of these contracts I'm familiar with is a a force majeure where they can't get product. That would give them an out or a potential delay that they could live with without us penalizing them, but that's the only type of out I'm aware of.
So in this climate, there is potential for that to happen.
There is, if they can't get material.
Yeah, that's what's, I mean, just curious.
Uh Madam Chair, I move to award the twenty twenty-two reclaim contract for SAP oh four seven dash six two one. Dash zero one four SAP oh four seven dash six two three dash oh oh eight. And SAP oh four seven dash six two eight oh one oh two, Night River of Sauk Rapids. For estimated total of two million nine hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred thirteen and eighty-two cents.
Motion by Commissioner Schiefelbein, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, second by Julie, any, any, could you rewrite, could you read that over, please?
One, one quick question, Phil, would, you say they could get out if they can't get material? Can't get material at a certain cost or just plain can't get material?
They would have to prove that they're unable to get material, I I don't know that cost plays into it, and I don't think. I've been involved with project delays related to that, not necessarily getting out of a contract.
You're not gonna bid a contract to try to get it out, hopefully they have that done.
Probably got that in place already.
Probably.
Any other questions for Phil, if not, all in favor, I opposed motion carries.
Alright, second item for consideration is to award our twenty twenty-two contracted crack ceiling quote. Here's a little map that shows where we're working in the world, kind of in the central east part of the county, three roads. Casat four, casat twenty-one and casat twenty-four are targets for crack ceiling, this is based on. Uh mostly winter and early, early spring observations as far as crack condition, how wide open they are, things of that nature. One thing I'll mention is, and I'll get to this later, but initially I did not have crack ceiling, contracted crack ceiling in our budget, so this was a late addition. Here the quotes received, I'm very happy with the number of quotes received, I will say they were a little higher than I expected, but given the climate we're in, materials. Um labor, equipment, everything is up, I think they are reasonable, and the fact that we got five tells me there was some. Competitive process in them giving us their numbers. Um when we talk about per mile costs, so reclaim, end-of-life, three hundred and ten thousand dollars a mile, here we're looking at nine thousand dollars a mile.
What was that last year then, relatively speaking?
To this, um I would say seven thousand dollars a mile about.
What was the reclaim kinda last year compared to the three hundred?
I'd say two ninety to pick a number.
This is considerably amount higher percentage wise and.
Yeah, I I would have expected the reclaims to have a similar increase to what I see with crack ceiling, but I think. We were fortunate, those two contractors are very competitive with each other.
Well Danny, if you don't mind, this is an easy motion, I'll take this one.
There are a bunch of those numbers.
Move to award the twenty twenty-two con- contracted crack ceiling quotes to Camco of Dassel, Dassel, Minnesota. For an estimated total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and forty-four and thirty-nine cents.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second.
Well, second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any more questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
The last item I have for you is to consider sizing on our casat fourteen called replacement between Lakes Washington and Stella. I'll briefly run through a similar presentation to what I gave at our public meeting, so some of you trying to stay awake, you've seen it before. Alright. So this culvert under casat fourteen, it's called bridge number nine zero nine seven nine, here's just a picture from the, I believe it's Lake Washington side, looking at the pipe. Um you can see it there, it's called what we call squash pipe oval metal culvert, uh the water in the pipe, not real deep at that time. Thirteen feet wide, eight feet tall, like I said, it's an oval, it was installed in nineteen sixty-four, it's structurally deficient. It's got some decay and sag issues that are warranting replacement in the near future. We have a twenty twenty-three pavement replacement project on casat fourteen, so I would like to replace the culvert in twenty-two. So that the winter of twenty-two and twenty-three could work out any settlements that we might have from the culvert replacement. Just an aerial view of the crossing. A zoomed-out view, so the red arrows is basically just indicating how the flow works. Water flows from Manuela to Stella to Washington and that outlets via, there there's a dam right here where it outlets at Lake Washington. And then the actual crossing that we're discussing is this red circle here. So hydraulic study, we hired a consultant to do a hydraulic study, basically to give us the minimum culvert size that we could. Install here and satisfy hydraulic requirements, meaning we're not causing any adverse impacts with this culvert. Um the study initially gave us a recommendation of a minimum size of a ten-by-eight-foot concrete box culvert. Uh we did not look at oval culverts just because they're uncommon or maybe shorter, that's why we wanted to go with the concrete box. Um so matching the exact in-place culvert with the same size is something we could do, but it wasn't something we explored in this instance. Um when they gave me the ten-by-eight-foot culvert size, I responded to the consultant, I was surprised with how narrow they. Were looking to install or how how narrow they proposed, so I went back to them and just asked if there was any guidance they could provide if we do know boats use this crossing. And that's when they shared with us to, maybe we should should consider a twelve-by-nine or twelve-by-ten culvert. Because remember, the existing culvert is thirteen feet wide at its max, excuse me, at its maximum. This is just an image to show you how the wider of the two options we're looking at, the ten-foot or twelve-foot culvert. This is how the wider would look in relation to the existing metal pipe. So you can see total width slightly less, but the geometry, the rectangle versus an oval does give it some, I think, passage advantages. During low water elevations and lowering the culvert a foot does put an extra water, an extra foot of water in the pipe. Um at all times, which if you are talking about boat traffic, it would help during low water. And here's a look of the smaller size, the minimum size that the hydraulic consultant said we could get by with. Um you can see total width quite a bit less, top and bottom, top is exactly the same, uh top uh. And the bottom is exactly the same, the top elevation is one much different, very similar. So when we started talking about this a year ago, um there were some public concerns, I kinda narrowed it down to the two big ones that I've been hearing. A larger lower culvert could potentially drain Lake Stella and allowing for easier boat passage through the crossing could devalue Stella properties. Basically just, yeah, I'm not interested in boat traffic. A little bit of history, nineteen thirty-seven, if you can kinda make it out. This is land on Lake Washington, the crossing, you can see the lake water elevations were quite a bit lower in nineteen thirty-seven. Nineteen fifty-five, lake levels are up, and I'll get to why in a little bit. Two thousand eighteen, it does look very similar to what we see in nineteen fifty-five for water elevations. Crossing changed over time, so like I indicated, the water level rising between thirty-seven and fifty-five. In nineteen fifty-three, the D N R installed outlet control structure on Lake Washington, that is where um a dam basically. And that's about one foot higher than where the culvert under casat fourteen sits today, so that's what's controlling water elevations, uh much of last fall. The water is well below the dam, today, I looked at it yesterday, it's slightly above, the water is just trickling over the dam now. Um in nineteen sixty-four, the highway department reconstructed casat fourteen through the area. They relocated the culvert and they did increase the size of the culvert, and I don't know if it was down to the project, but one thing that happened at about that time as well was. If you see the channel here, that didn't exist prior to the nineteen sixty-four era. Um I assume that was installed for boat traffic or to develop the north side of that ridge, I don't know. But that's one thing that happened at about that time as well. So as I indicated, the outlet of Lake Washington is about a foot higher than the current bottom of the culvert under casat fourteen. Um so undersizing our casat fourteen culvert could raise lake elevations of Lake Stella, it could restrict flow, act as a water control structure. Um oversizing the culvert would maintain things as they are today. Uh the biggest thing I look at when I make that statement is our historical water elevations. If you look at this, the orange is water elevations on Lake Stella, blue is water elevations on Lake Washington. This is from nineteen eighty-nine to basically the end of twenty twenty-one. Um for those of you that remember the late eighties, apparently there was a drought of some sort. I'd be facetious, yes, I know there was a drought, and it was pretty low back then, and you can see at the end here, towards the end of twenty twenty-one, it dips down again. And keep in mind, these fluctuations are not huge, you know, each line here is half a foot. So these lakes don't move three to five feet a year, like we've heard of some others, they move, you know, a foot, seems like maybe that's typical bounce. Um but what I look at here is how the orange and the blue lines move together. They're never separated by more than I would say a couple inches over time since nineteen eighty-nine. So when I say that the Lake Washington Dam controls the lake levels, that's what I'm referring to. Um that culvert's not restricting flow to prop Stella up, uh more than the dam. Just to get a better picture, here's the more recent history of the lake levels, just to better see how the data sets up. So this is from nineteen, or two thousand eighteen to today, you can see here in recent history. They're generally within, each line here is two tenths of a foot, so a little more than two inches, they're relatively always within two inches of each other. Something I just pointed out at the public meeting, regional drought, it hit other lakes in the area, you can see Manuela dipped at the end of twenty twenty-one. Same thing with Lake Minnebell, same thing with Lake Ripley, so I know what's on people's minds right now is the recent drought. It was regional, it wasn't just those lakes. So public comments, I've received a number of phone calls, emails, and just to essentially break them down for. What their preference would be, if I talk to somebody, I ask, do you want the twelve-foot or the ten-foot culvert? Sixty-seven percent have said they prefer a larger culvert, twenty-two percent said smaller. And eleven percent didn't have an opinion, they wanted information, project timing, things like that. Comments that I heard primarily were related to, some people like the idea of improving connectivity between the lakes. Some people were concerned about Lake Stella lake levels, uh boat traffic was a discussion topic, and then there were a few that wanted something larger. Bigger culvert or a bridge or something that would accommodate even larger boat traffic. Keep in mind, even if we go with larger culvert, it's not like you can fly through it at twenty miles an hour, it's gonna be low speed. If you have a top, put your top down, um if it was me, I'd have people on each side guiding me through, it's twelve feet wide, you would probably be. Hitting the sides if you're not careful about it. So the public meeting we held two weeks ago, four hundred and fifty invites were sent out to property owners around both lakes. Eighty-two non-county staff or commissioners were present, which is smashed any previous records I had had for a public meeting turnout. It was great to have that that many people in the room, um we did take a straw poll as part of the meeting, and there you can see the breakdown of culvert size preference that was in the room that night. Um some of the people, maybe most of the people that I talked about that have called or emailed are probably in this same data set. So keep in mind, there's some overlap there between the people that have called and emailed and the people that were at the meeting. Primary concerns with the larger culvert were, like I said, boat traffic and water elevations on Lake Stella. So as I indicated, the existing culvert maintains Lake Stella and Lake Washington el- make, Lake Washington elevations at the same. Approximate um elevation, are they always identical? No, I'd say they're usually within a couple inches. Um as water draws down, dry times, I'd say it's very likely that they're almost identical. Stella will probably almost always be slightly higher than Washington, just to maintain flow because water's coming in from Lake Manuela. The eight by ten size, the smaller of the two that we talked about, that would be our minimum opening size that we can consider, larger may be considered. And twelve by ten is what I'm recommending, I'd say less from a highway point of view, because the highway will be just fine with either culvert. I think there's value in having connectivity between the lakes for the public. And the public feedback has indicated there, they may feel the same way. But not everybody is in agreement with that, of course. Not much here I didn't touch on, twelve foot culverts wider than a ten foot culvert, it's pretty straightforward. Um, here's something I did not present at the public meeting, but one thing I think about is, so metal culvert as it sags in the center over time. The ends may have a tendency to rise, it's like if you push on something in the middle, the ends may rise. I can't prove that that's happened over time, but what I do have is some survey data that you see here, the nineteen sixty-four culvert plan says it was installed at an elevation of sixty-six point one, and that's on an assumed data, meaning it's not reference to any geological survey elevation that we could compare to anything. What's odd is it lines up very closely with our actual data, our actual geodetic survey information. So it's possible that that's, that sixty-six, sixty-six one is relevant, but I wouldn't bank on it because the things they used for bench marks back then are trees, telephone poles, things that aren't there today or have changed. But what I do look at pretty closely is the nineteen eighty-eight DNR survey, they surveyed the lake, our culvert and the dam in nineteen eighty-eight. And they said the bottom of the Casas fourteen culvert was at ten sixty-six point five. Our twenty twenty-one survey said it's at ten sixty-seven, a half a foot higher than what was indicated in nineteen eighty-eight. To me, that tells me that maybe the ends have been rising over time as the center sags. I, I wouldn't live or die by that statement, but I think there's evidence there to point me that direction. And for reference, you can see where the DNR survey put the top of the Lake Washington outlet dam in nineteen eighty-eight. That was one point two feet higher than what our, um, culvert inverts are today. And when I talk about the invert elevation of Casas fourteen, so we're talking about the inlet-outlet ends of the culvert. We don't go through the pipe and try and get elevations all the way to the bottom, because the bottom varies. Our invert is what the highest of the inlet-outlet are, because that's what's controlling flow at this time. So in summary, we want to replace this culvert in twenty twenty-two, the sizing has triggered some public feedback and certain, definitely some concerns. Um, we want to make sure we have county board support before we move forward with our design. We're basically ready to get our plans finished up, but we need to be a hundred percent sure on our culvert size before we finalize our design and get, get going looking for a contractor. Fall of twenty-two would be our desired installation. And here again is just an image of what I think would best serve the crossing, um, the twelve foot wide culvert lowered one foot from existing, um, invert elevations.
Which in essence, if the data is correct, puts it back where it originally was.
Maybe, uh, yeah, see, I can't prove it, but it, you might be talking about putting it back close to what was there in nineteen sixty-four.
So, what are the wishes of the board?
I thought we were going to close fourteen.
We didn't talk, we have some people that would like to. I, I found it interesting that Ethan wasn't there, and kind of irritating, so.
Our DNR representative, yes.
Didn't I mention something about poor relations?
And I was going to bring that up. I waited till now, he was supposed to be there and Phil handled, handled this meeting very, you did a good job. But he needed to be there, and when did you find out he wasn't coming?
The morning of the meeting.
So I think, well, I'll need to reach out to him and let him know that, that wasn't, and I also have told. And I like Ethan, but I mean, did he have a legitimate reason?
He indicated he had personal reasons, he was unable to work that day.
Do they not, are they not able to send anyone else when that happens, or?
I don't know how their office is organized, I think Ethan's probably the only one I've ever worked with out of that Spicer office.
Well, I'm going to ask him about it when they see.
But if he did the, um, investigation, that's who we would want, we wouldn't want a substitute that hadn't been there and done them.
But some of the questions that they had for Phil should have been directed to you. So I, I guess I'll have to assume he had a legitimate reason, but. So I've gotten some emails, and the ones I have are about two to one for larger, and I have from that is a lake, on the lake, and he's dead against it, so I will just say that. But I think the majority of the people there were for it, if that's a good sampling, I mean.
And that's one concern that some of the people in attendance had was, is it fair that, uh, a person on Washington's vote is the same as a person on Stella's vote? I don't know, I mean, we could stretch that all over the place, lake users that don't live on the lake, it's a public resource, it's not necessarily owned by the property owners on the lake.
Well, one of the issues, I, I mean, how, what's the life expectancy of this culvert?
Well, and I didn't mention that, but a hundred years is what I would expect to get out of a tight concrete box culvert, so. Once this goes in, this is what the crossing will be for a very long time.
And that, that would be my point, I mean, the one that's, we're replacing a fifty-eight year old culvert with a hundred year plan, you know, our main concern is roadway and, and doing the work before we repair the road next year. Now, this ain't something we're going to change every ten years or something, this is a long-term project. And, and capacity tends to increase over time versus decrease, and if I mean, I, I think when you take the boat traffic and some of the issues out of it, I mean, it's basically our my opinion is that's the road project that we need to look at, what's best for the road.
The road is quite narrow there. Basically, just the width of the culvert. Is the new culvert going to be longer? Is the road going to be widened through that stretch?
It'll be slightly wider right at the culvert, but not up and down the road hundreds of feet or anything like that. I don't think I have the culvert lengths with me, I want to say we're extending the culvert twenty feet or so, maybe ten feet on each side. And part of that is to help tie down the slopes, it's not just widening the road top. But right now, the end of the culvert is a relatively steep, um, tie-in, so we install a two to one concrete end with rip, ramp down the sides, just a little more gentle. Less erosion after we, you know, disturb everything, that kind of thing.
So people like to walk along there too, and it has been a very narrow place to.
I've been getting complaints about that for ten years, that somebody's going to get, and I passed them on to the predecessor and you. They walk, they bike, and they drive too fast, and we've put the speed sign out there, we've done things like that, and I don't know if we have an answer next year, except we're going to try to widen one side a little wider, aren't we?
Yeah, we'll try to widen the pavement as much as we can with the existing road top, but a full regrading, adding shoulders, um, there's just no space through there.
We'd have to get property.
We'd be impacting lake shore property, and I'm talking about lake access that may get lost.
That is not a popular subject. So, and it's not popular with me either, but there is a lot of discussion about the safety out there, and it, it is a concern, so they talked about that a little bit at the meeting too, about decreasing the speed zone, but sometimes, if I understood you, they look at that and then they increase instead of decreasing it, right? Because that's not a local decision, decision.
If we were to initiate a speed study with Minn dot, because Minn stat, Minn dot sets our speed limits. It would open us up to a higher or lower speed limit, depending what that study comes up with result-wise. A big factor in those speed studies is existing traffic speeds. So when we talked about this early on, I talked to our sheriff's office, they had some speed data and existing speeds are high, which would not bode well for us if we wanted to lower a speed limit.
I think it might be all right as summer traffic starts to put the speed, the reminder out there again.
Part of next year's project. The pavement should be slightly wider, narrowing of the, the paint lines, it's actually a pretty effective strategy to squeeze traffic a little bit. They'll slow down, they're less comfortable. Um, gives a little more of a refuge for those who do choose to walk out there, although I, I will say that roads are for vehicles, they're not necessarily built for pedestrians. But I don't think we'll use them.
I, I get it too, but I think I'd put my dog in the car and go to town or something, I mean, it's dangerous out there, just.
That's, that's, there's just, there's a lot.
But biking, I get it.
When you're driving through there, I mean, you know, there's.
We also have people upset that they're using it.
Who decides if those signs remain that flash the, uh, speed?
They're portable, they put them up, we've done it before.
Is there a cost to that? Do we, do you determine or the sheriff's department?
Yeah, there's costs involved, uh, they're two or three thousand dollars apiece, and we intend to put one up on each end of this in conjunction with the paving project next year. Just something that'll hopefully trigger people's minds when they drive through in excess of the speed limit.
Now, would those be permanent?
The ones, yes. We have a portable unit, the sheriff's office operates, but we plan to put up permanent signs.
Well, what I'm saying is, there's been times we've taken the portable one in the summer and put it out there, and we should probably do that this summer. But you're going to have some other ones at each end of them.
Yep, with our paving project.
I got one in Watkins, we're working on two of them.
I mean, it's a, but I have gotten a lot of calls.
There's certain areas in the county that speeds issue.
But the, the issue with the water level is controlled by that dam, so the increase in size is not going to suddenly reduce Stella. I mean, that would be my only concern if I lived in Stella, is reduction in water, you know, because then your, whatever your dock and stuff would be. But according to the study, there is none of that, that shows that a bigger culvert is not going to affect the water level of Stella or.
Wouldn't affect Manuela, because.
But that would be a cost.
We're higher. The elevation, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Phil, the elevation of Stella is ten seventy-two, the elevation of Washington is ten seventy. Point something on all of them, and Manuel is ten seventy-four.
I thought they were always two inches of each other.
Well, this is what I rely on for lake level water elevation, so what I would say is sixty-seven was about where both lakes bottomed out at the end of last year. Today, they might be slightly higher, I suppose they'd be at the dam elevation being, I see water coming over the dam. Which is eighty-two, or eighty, eighty point two, sixty-eight point two, sorry.
So what probably has the greatest effect is on low water here, because the water isn't going over the dam.
But it also isn't moving.
If, if they're.
Water seeks its own level. It, unless it's being pushed by more water, it's level, I mean. Water seeks its own level. Water don't stand on the hill.
I would, I mean, the culvert will see most flow when the, when there's a rain event and water's moving. I'd say things that are really going to slow down the way they do today, once we have a drawdown. You know, for that, if I look at the whole historical data, I say today, the lakes at the low points are almost identical. So no matter how big we make this culvert, Stella's never going to get below Washington, so there's, they're kind of bottoming out against each other.
Is the, at the dam, is that the pipe leaving beyond the dam is adequate to handle?
It's, I think, an eighty foot long, um, forget what they call it, but it's like an eighty foot long just dam that water falls over.
So there's all kinds of capacity there on major rainy event if the water goes.
It's more like a weir, isn't it?
Yeah, I'd call it a weir or a dam. It's not adjustable, it's fixed, I think it's a concrete structure.
But it has plenty of capacity, even with the increased culvert size. That's.
Not a concern at all.
Not that it's the other way, the dam wasn't big enough to let the water out, now it's coming out people's basements or something.
Is the dam the only outlet for all three of the lakes involved?
Yes, water flows from Manuela to Stella to Washington, and then outlets into, I don't know what water course that is.
Actually, it all starts at Minnebell, doesn't it, comes down through Sucker Creek into Manuela, on into Stella, to Washington, to the girl.
My initial reaction to this whole situation was, why not simply replace with exactly the same size as what's there? Then no persons would have a gripe. Why was it decided to make it larger?
Sure, uh, well, initially that came from trying to simplify the geometry, rather than put in an oval shaped pipe, we wanted to put in a rectangular pipe. And that's where we get the hydraulic study to say, what's the smallest rectangular pipe we could, we could put in without restricting flow on Stella negatively impacting folks upstream. From there, the larger was just my feedback to the consultant saying, boats use this, what if, if we narrow it by three feet, is that going to be okay? And that's where they came back with, consider a larger option.
And the square one's forty years more life.
Yeah, I'd expect more life out of a square, and I.
I mean, I, I guess it doesn't matter one way or another, they'll probably replace it before a hundred anyway, but maybe not necessarily sixty, I don't know.
The, the ten eight or the twelve, ten.
Yeah, those are.
So both, both sizes are a hundred year structure, twelve, ten.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, the oval versus this.
And the oval's not, it's not a common design, you know, it's not a standard installation, could we have one made? I believe so, but I don't know what our timeline would be, um, it, it'd be going down a different path, we don't have those out there for, for new builds.
So. What are the board's wishes? Yeah, I, I went back and forth on this too, and then it's like, in the long run too, though, it's like going, when you look at the twelve, ten by thirteen, eight, you know, you're still going to have to navigate through there regardless. If you're, you're, you know, worried about boat traffic, and as long as water levels don't change, you know, that's, my, would be my only beef, was that's the other lake, is like, if my water level changed because of it for some reason, then I'd be like, what? You know, then that affects your property value. But with the fact that there's proven that it doesn't, you know, because the dam basically stabilized the water. I'm leaning more towards the twelve by ten because, you know.
Most of the, most of the capacity is in here.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, that's, that's why it's not a. You can't multiply twelve, ten by, you know, ten, whatever, to get a hundred and twenty, and thirteen by eight, and eight by ten, you know, it's not that. That's why the water thing, the level doesn't work, so I'd be leaning more towards the twelve by ten, because I still think it's you're still going to have to navigate through, it's not like you're going to have a ton more traffic, but.
Has there been a study at all about the amount of traffic that goes through? Other than the people that live right there who see some boats go through, but.
Yeah, people there that wanted everybody to come over to Washington and people that wanted to get, I mean, it's like, it's, it's a mixed bag. But you can do this, it, it's not, no matter what we do, they're going to keep going through, so, right? There's no reason to believe that they're not, am I right?
I would agree. You know, higher water elevations, if you went with a narrower culvert, you're potentially looking at a narrower than existing culvert. But it depends on the height of the water.
See, that channel that you showed in the one picture that was created, that's all lily pads and cattails and so forth, that that path is through, and that's.
Was that even navigatable this last summer?
Oh, I, I doubt it, I don't know, I can't say for sure, but. Pretty thin. And they want, they want everybody going through there at close throttle anyway, so you're not creating any wake. You know, because that's, starts destroying the, if you notice, if you've gone over that, uh, culvert, existing culvert, the ones in that channel, they're pretty flat to the water, so wakes really affect their shoreline.
To the west.
The way I was looking at it too then, because I'm going back and forth, I was, but I lived on a smaller lake, I'd want less traffic, period, you know. So, but the eight by ten would actually reduce traffic again from what it is now. So then you're actually, you know, whenever you buy property in Washington or Stella, if you wanted that access, you're actually changing your value if you considered that value to go back and forth, if you're buying property, so to speak. Because the eight by ten, regardless, will reduce traffic, I'd think, from the existing culvert, period.
I, I would assume so, I mean, that's way out of my realm of expertise.
No, I'm just saying that, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just saying in general, you know, and it's like going, okay, if you bought property. On Washington or Stella now, you're thinking, I don't know if there's value there to cross or not. But I think there'd be some value there in some people's minds, not mine, if I lived on a small lake, I don't want anybody on my lake, you know. But, you know, but there is a consensus, I'm sure, I don't know why the bigger lake people would wanna go on the smaller lake and. Smaller lake wouldn't wanna go on the bigger lake.
What is the traffic, five a day in the summer, is it twenty-five on a weekend?
I I don't know, I'd imagine it's fourth of July and that's about it, and. Small lake people are like, hey, there's too many people here, and it's the kids of visiting on Lake Washington that wanna go through, but I don't know. I have no idea, like I said, I don't live in a lake, so.
So what I did was I looked at my emails and I looked at the meeting and I, and I felt like the majority want a bigger one, so that's kinda what I'm. Facing my opinion on. I haven't heard any reason not to, I guess, I mean, there's people that don't want it to, but. The majorities that I've gotten and talked to are the same as the numbers you put up there, so.
And I look at, like I said, I look at the road project, the long term capacity down the road. We have the, the dams in place already with capacity to handle a larger culvert in a rainy event.
We're not involved anyway.
In the lake, yeah, in the lake, with the dam is, the water levels are controlled, so.
That's kinda what we should be focusing on.
That's, that's why I, not that everybody's point isn't valuable, but. But it's, our focus needs to stick to Saw fourteen.
So, here we are, we're gonna have to. I'm looking for a motion if anyone's. Unless you want more discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize Meek County Public Works to proceed with culvert replacement designed for the replacement of bridge nine oh nine seven nine. Using a twelve foot by ten foot concrete box culvert.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Shifelman, any more discussion? All in favor to authorize the uh twelve by ten culvert, signified by saying aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you. Anything else highly related questions?
No, thank you for all your work on that, your presentation was very informative. I must tell you, when I got there, I thought, I don't know why he's doing this, cause I think it's gonna raise more, but you did a good job, so.
Well, and my goal is that people have something they wanna share, share their opinion, I want them to get an opportunity to speak, but if they don't all.
It was a good.
Yeah, the emails I got yesterday were about pictures of bad roads, but I already shared that with you, so. We're expecting, just warn you, there's another snowstorm coming here, so.
How are, how are we doing, Watkins, that sign?
It was there for two hours. It was there for two hours.
Yep, alright, uh and Andrew Letson, County Administrators Report, are you there, Andrew? Wake up, how are you feeling, Andrew?
I'm, I'm, I'm hanging in there.
Alright, that.
We're doing okay.
You're a trooper.
Man, we appreciate you not being here.
Not, not always, maybe, but that depends on the subject.
Good decision.
We need to give him thirty seconds to wake up yet?
You're on.
Um, so I only have a couple of brief things for my report, first off, we talked about it a little bit, but as a reminder, we have the special work session. Uh next Tuesday for the, the driving tour with the Public Works Department. And then on April nineteenth is the Boys and Girls County Day, and um it'll be lunch at the American Legion at eleven thirty, hoping everyone can attend there. And then uh quick update on the sale of the seven oh one Sibley Avenue property.
Good, could you, could you repeat that? We, we missed the county day and the lunch.
Well, it's, it's, it's on the agenda, but.
That'll be the nineteenth, okay.
Yeah, road tour, why don't we start in a road tour?
I believe eight thirty, I believe we're gonna meet at the, the highway building, um we'll confirm that, we're gonna send out a agenda on Thursday for that. Uh because it is a special meeting, so we do have to post it as an agenda.
And we don't know how long it's gonna take, are we doing?
We're shooting for about three hours.
Wear your boots.
Just make sure you get off the bus when it's over.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew, sorry.
I got a pair of boots.
It's a little dirty. Seven oh one Sibley Avenue. Um as we had talked about uh previously, we had um the buyer discovered a, a potential underground storage tank. On the site that was not registered in the state system. We took a look back, um working with our, our um outside attorney on this. With Wooden Roo, looking at the, the previous sales of the property, and there was not an environmental disclosure when we purchased it. Nor was there one when the previous owner purchased it, so we were completely unaware that it was there. Again, it was also not a uh found on the state registry, so. Working with the buyer, we came to, uh they, they wanted us to pay for the removal of the property. Uh or, no, sorry, removal of the tank from the property, working with them, we came to an agreement to split that cost, it's estimated to be about ten thousand dollars total. So each of us would pay five thousand dollars towards it. Uh ultimately, we are not a hundred percent certain what it is, we believe it's a relatively small waste oil tank. That amount could change if they discover more things in there when they get into the ground. So we're working on getting that scheduled, uh but at the same time, um we're also looking to close on the property this month. Um so things are moving along on that fairly well, and that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, any questions for Andrew? Now we'll continue, you were done uh with your commissioner update?
Yeah, unless you wanted more.
If you want to, it's.
No, I'm good.
Danny, uh Steve, do you wanna go next?
Yeah, I can continue on, I did hop into the ju- uh childcare meeting on the twenty-second. Uh Beth and Andrew were in there too, um I wanted to pop in from the E D A side because we had offered a ten thousand dollar grant. And I'll let you guys kinda chime in here a little bit, there, there's plenty of discussion over. How to use it, where to use it.
That's what always, that's every meeting. That's what we do.
There's a lot of discussion on childcare and, and addressing issues, but how to address them is the ongoing.
And I think finding people who are, I'll just chime in, one thing that, from that meeting that was kinda disappointing was we've lost seven, seven have closed. And only five new ones have opened, which is concerning, so the problem is not getting smaller. And trying to establish somebody to get into it is becoming more difficult, so I didn't.
That was over like the last two years, I think so, but five and seven. Um and then they did talk about uh May sixth is daycare appreciation. Week or day or, um so.
Is there some daycare legislation that is being looked at too, did I hear?
Yes, I do not know to what extent, though, but there, it's definitely, childcare is, is a, mental health, childcare are two big things. And there, and also, uh they talked about fingerprinting and background checks, that seems to be uh kind of a. Uh issue that they looked at, ways to help out with some funding for that, other than that, what are they looking for?
About it since the initial, we started the task force, it's been a discussion, so I don't know. Andrew, was, is availability not what it was, or I can't remember what the whole discussion was?
Yeah, that was, that was the issue, was the availability for it. Um the site, one of the sites that had been being used, but was no longer available. Um and they were looking at um potentially reach out to Littrell Licensing to see if that would be something they would be interested in taking on.
Go ahead, yeah, I know, like in Eden Valley, the, the police chief used to always go to the school, like in, going there in kindergarten, get all the kindergarteners and. Things like that.
I had a friend that I had to take to Wilmer to do it, but I wonder. Maybe, maybe they don't like, who was gonna reach out to Littrell Licensing, Andrew, you, you were gonna or who?
Uh Judy was.
So, so that's, that's kinda all I got on that, uh they did on the grant, I guess the ten thousand dollars, it is tiered. Um uh towards in homes and certain, I think twelve fifty, twelve hundred and fifty dollars is the lowest amount. Twenty-five hundred and, and then if you're a childcare center, it could be up to five thousand. Um so, other than that, I had uh Grove City Care Board meeting, everything seems to be going uh fairly well over there. Um as far as COVID and different things like that, um they're starting to uh renew their activities. This is their twenty-fifth anniversary, so they will be having um some uh celebrations during Windmill Days. Which is the first weekend in June. And uh other than that, I had um Central Minnesota Emergency Services Board. Um and couple House File, House File thirty eighty-six. And Senate File thirty eighty-one are on the AMR radio system, there's about two hundred, and I just had an email from Carly Stark here from AMC this morning on that. To talk to the legislator, the House version of the, of the bill is, got good support, but it's been running into opposition in the senate. Um which they're a little bit surprised because I thought they had good support there, so. I'm gonna make some phone calls on that one, to try and help push that along a little bit. And other than that, uh Danny mentioned, we had the, the class in comp. Um met with David Brown and Associates kinda to put that plan together, so. Um and then yesterday, at M R C, Paul Torkelson, I wasn't able to stay on for the whole thing. Paul, uh Representative Paul Torkelson from Southern Minnesota was on there talking about transportation and the auto part tax that Phil. Was talking about here too, um. His, his version of the bill, they'd like to do like a third, they're looking at ways to, number one, um. Take a hundred percent of this tax and put it towards transportation, where now I think it's split up into different portions. Um one thing they're looking at, um they'd like to, or Paul, so uh Representative Torkelson's. Bill would be a third metro, a third, and another third on the forty mile radius around the metro. And then a third outstate to um, and he had some uh interesting. Uh trying to, trying to balance the metro versus outstate. Um divide a little bit, if you will, trying, he said we gotta come up with some new ways to address. Metro gets everything and the outline counties always are on the short end of things, so. That was one of their ways to do this, tier it a little, maybe into threes versus just metro and rural.
Similar to House Bill then, only breaking it further. A percentage to townships, a percentage to, was his breakdown to cities.
And there, and there, yeah, the Senate file on that one too has been running into some.
That one is still geographically surrounding the cities though, where, that's still.
That's statewide.
Counties, something else, so that's even, that's a compromise, he's trying to get, then evidently.
Trying to get away from that, metro, rural, and get a, another layer in there to at least try and balance it a little bit.
See, we gotta be careful though, what they do too, because they gotta take care of townships, because that's where a lot of that money for their roads comes from. So, we don't wanna see the township get hurt.
And it'd be interesting to see what Phil would, how he'd weigh in on that. Um, and I, and I wasn't able to say on the M R C, but Julie Ring was on that call yesterday. Um and I found that kinda interesting, um I have been following up a little bit with the. I've had some conversations at AMC about uh starting a rural ag and. Uh ag and rural policy, division of AMC, and then I would move away from uh the uh. The M R C, so she was on that call yesterday, which was uncharacteristic, so I, I am gonna put a call into her and see. Um if she had a presentation or, cause they are looking at ways to.
Were, were you off when Presbilla was on? Cause he was gonna be on for Primewest, were you already off?
I was off already. That's all I got.
Um we had a local public health meeting, and that was on Wednesday the sixteenth. The committee has been looking for a couple of additional people to help serve on that committee. I contacted two individuals and one has accepted, and she's in the process of completing the application form. And visiting with Diane. Diane and the hiring, Diane Winter, Diane and the hiring committee were going to be conducting interviews for Julie Schrum's position that Friday. And so those, those things have been in, in the works, we've been dealing with it. At the last count, there were seventy-four deaths of COVID in Meker County, and that was over the two year. Period of time, it's been two years now, they're still offering shots, but the interest is almost zero. Doctor Searle, at the beginning of the year, he said, sure, I'll, I'll chair the committee. Then he came back and now he's retiring in May, and he's currently working at finding his, a colleague of his. To take his place on the local public health board and to chair that, so that's still in the works. And our next meeting will be on May eighteenth. Then on the first of April, we had an extension meeting, I serve on the Farm Family of the Year. Committee within U of M Extension, we had a meeting and there were several applicants this year, ten. Ten new families were nominated, um the committee agreed on one family and it will be announced later. And they will be acknowledged at the county fair. Um we have a zoning meeting coming up now on the twelfth. For my district, my area, that'll be in the evening of the twelfth, and then we have an A I S meeting coming up on the thirteenth, and that'll be here in the boardroom. That's what I have.
Um, well, we'll start March twenty-first, we had an I T meeting, and that was kind of an interesting one because. Uh they had a discussion about the cell phones that, and, and Andrew, if you're listening, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the cell phones we have. Um are I sevens, and they're already on I elevens every place else now, so we're a little bit far behind in that replacement. Same thing on the, the Android side, side. Um they talked about the printer replacement, and it appears that purchasing rather than leasing is gonna be a better financial option for the printers. Uh and then, concern that I always have is, you know, we've all switched over to Outlook. And we have office and there's so much productivity that is built within them, and a lot of our folks don't know all the options that they have. To use within these to make their, their job a little easier, so.
So are you gonna have some classes, cause I would attend?
Well, that's, I can, I think they're kinda talking about that, but we haven't formalized anything, so. Um, the culvert discussion, um the only thing I wanna say about that from the Knight and Dassel. And, and you guys that weren't there, um Steve and, and Julie, uh Phil did a magnificent job handling eighty-seven people, like, was it eighty-seven? Getting some very diverse questions and not having Ethan Jensen there to support what he was saying going on that. Um Phil did a fantastic job and really, uh explained everything very well.
It'd been a blessing.
They would have liked to have had him there, I'll tell you that right now.
We would have. Uh earlier that day, I had a watershed meeting, one watershed meeting, and basically what we did, it was a virtual meeting. And we met the team from Houston Engineering that's gonna be heading up our, our plans, so it was just nice to, you know. Even though it was virtual, we got to see a face and a voice and everything with, with it. Um we had the informational meeting with Prime Health on the twenty-fourth, um I thought that was a really good meeting. Um U cap, um. Got into a very long discussion um about leave policies there. And um we wanted to change the annual, earned annual leave, which is a very inexpensive. We wanted to change the annual, earned annual leave, which is a very inexpensive way to give an employee a benefit. And it did pass, uh, by and large, the, as you move up in years of service. You're gonna be granted more time, as it should be, so that was a good move. Um, funding and stuff is, is in good shape at, at U cap, there are not any issues there. Um, March twenty-fifth, um, we went to the annual drainage meeting of uh Danny and Phil and John and Barb. Probably the, I shouldn't say the best part of this, but one of the best parts was the tour we got of. The reconstructed facility over there in Glencoe, and I was, I was pretty impressed, I don't know about you Danny, but.
I was just thinking.
Well, then we talked to the gentleman from Wright County and they just got done with a fifty-two million dollar project.
Spend a lot of money in.
And that was just their justice center, and now they're doing another one.
That's what they do.
I don't think we have the appetite for fifty-two million.
No, I don't think.
Um, a C P T meeting, um, we voted to allow Pope County to buy in at the cost of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, that was um heavily discussed because we were one of the counties that originally took the risk getting in. Um, and now to let another county in after the risk is primarily gone. It, it created a pretty good debate, um. The reason Pope County did not come in originally was they didn't have the hundred and seventy thousand to buy in. But they have been a customer of ours ever since they, we formed it, so, um, they did finally get accepted. Second half of that was, we accepted the resignation of one of the co-directors, Gwen. Um, it was Gwen and Mike Kohler, uh, who were co-directors. So we didn't have one person that the buck stopped on their desk. Um, I guess I see this personally as a terrific opportunity. Um, to start maybe tweaking and restructuring a little bit of C P T, so I didn't see this as, um. Although we'll miss Gwen, that's, don't misunderstand that part, we will miss her, she had a great deal of knowledge on that tax rewrite and. Several other things that she did there, but this will be an opportunity now for us to. Potentially move forward in a little bit different direction. And then yesterday in Wilmer, we had a C C T meeting, the building committee. Um, we had been looking at the hazardous waste site as one of the potentials for a replacement building, but. Um, we saw some preliminary figures and um of a new building, building all on its own. Not trying to remodel and, and make this into a cobbled affair, um, and that's, that. First number came in at around seven million and we have a grant for three point six, so we would have to fund the balance, so. Um, we got some work to do there yet, but. That is it, oh, I wanna remind everybody, I'm sure you all got that letter from the firemen's.
Yeah, I pray, I was gonna, I got it right here, small prayer on the eleventh.
Next Monday night at six, six o'clock, I am gonna go, just simply because they invited us. And I think that, um, working together with the city is always a good idea. And it likes milk.
Reason right there.
Right there, yes.
Okay, are you, Paul, you're done?
I'm done.
So every, a lot of my stuff was covered. I did have, uh, we had a meeting about the opioid settlement, um, and that was basically just. Kinda review wh- where we're at, I guess, and we're gonna do s- get some more information on how to go forward, correct, Brandy? Um, do you wanna, I didn't write down the amount of money, do you, was it eight hundred and thirty thousand over eighteen years, is that?
Eight hundred and thirty thousand, eighteen years.
And the first bunch will be more, I think, right, they're.
Heavy on the front end.
Heavy on the front end, so, we had some discussion about what to do with it and uh probably education and. We're gonna see, I guess, so. Um, then I had a supporting hands personnel meeting, we went over raises and benefits, they, they're doing a combination of a COLA plus merit. They've been working on merit over there for, I don't know how long, and it's not well accepted, so, but. Joel is not willing to give up, so he keeps working toward it, so we'll see how it goes. Um, and then we're gonna give a five hundred dollar retention bonus to the employees. The issues right now with supporting hands is we're not getting enough cases. Enough kids aren't coming into the program, so we're trying to figure out how to do that, we have plenty of funding. And it's a program that really does work well, if we get in early with early intervention, it's proven to work well. But we're not finding, for some reason, except for WIC, we don't have a lot of ways to reach out, so. We wanna try to get ahold of the clinics and see if we can get the doctors on board, so. Um, they're working on that and I think that's probably all I had. So, anything else, anyone?
Any timeline, Andrew, on starting to get some figures on this remodeling stuff tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, so. So we're having a, a core team meeting tomorrow to take a preliminary look at what they've put together, we're gonna have some preliminary numbers, however. The April work session in three weeks now is what's gonna be primarily devoted to this topic, so. We'll get an update then.
Are we meeting downstairs tomorrow?
Yes.
Do you anticipate it to take over an hour and a half, I have another meeting at eleven thirty, so.
I, I don't necessarily think it will, depends how robust of a discussion we end up having about certain things, but.
Do you think you'll feel well enough to attend?
I believe so.
Oh, good. Alright, anything else?
Don't push it, Andrew.
No, don't push it, we don't.
Can you feel the love?
Well, we don't have the technology down there for him to join down there.
And we have the road tour now, a week from today.
Yes, that'll be fun.
We're gonna get a.
They have a, they are bringing the bus with the dancing pole. Julie, you can be first.
I'm not gonna comment on that one.
Party, I should have said party bus.
We need to adjourn, don't we?
Why don't they print it every other year after an election when it actually has changes?
Looking for a motion to adjourn, I should have done.
So move.
We're adjourned, I should have done that before I said that.
If, if you do not want those new books.